March 5th, 2019, 6:00 PM. We're here at City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon my friend J.C. Campbell to give us our invocation, followed by the Pledge Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by Councilperson Ryaner. All rise, please.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the invitation to do this tonight. And City Council, it's a pleasure to be in here. And City Manager, I'm glad you're here. Prayed with us if you would. Our Heavenly Father, we ask that you be with this group tonight. Give them the wisdom and the guidance to do what is good for our country, for our city, and for our county. We ask that you be with our military who is throughout this world that's giving us the privilege of being here tonight to do what we're doing. We ask that you be a little bit lenient on the weather that's pints of cold. So, we ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. My pledge is allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one one and indivisible.
I want to thank everybody for being out here tonight. I know there's probably other things you could be doing, but thanks for joining us here. We're going to start off with a very special presentation. We've got a presentation tonight to recognize a lot of the staff members who have received various certificates in 2018. This is not everybody that has a certificate, but these are the ones that were presented or accomplished these certificates in 2018. And we want to continue to recognize these folks on a yearly basis and let people know what these people are doing and how they have to achieve these. Some of these certificates take over, sometimes they take years to accomplish, and a lot of them take some time away from their families to go to these schools and things like that that they do. So, we want to recognize these folks and thank them for that special deed that they do and that special part of their jobs that they do for the city. So, I'm going to start out, if I could, if I could have all the people, if you're here tonight, to just join up here and line up here so that we can recognize you. We've got Jesse Sanders. Jesse Sanders received a D. Wastewater Operator's License. Yeah, we'll get Chris out there to...
(laughing).
Line up there. We've got Jared Butler, who also received a D. Wastewater Operator License and a Backflow Prevention Assembly Tester License. Thank you, Jared. We've got Ed Helker, who has received a D. Water Operator License. Derek Williams, also a D. Water Operator License. Matt Jackson has received a C. Water Treatment Operator License. Jimmy Gibson, who has received a B. Surface Water License. Thank you, Jimmy. We also have Dawson Bowling, who has received a B. Surface Water License. Got Todd Wiley, he has received an A. Water Operator License. We have Rowan Anchato, probably butchered that last name, but he's got an A. Wastewater Treatment Operator License. Here, okay. We've got Adam Villa, a Transformer Certification. Josh Maples, a Hotline, Aerial Device Operation and Safety School Certificate. How's that fit on your business card there? That's pretty... Aaron McLean, everybody knows Aaron here, he's got a Certified Pool Operator. He's ready to be a lifeguard, I guess, huh? Christie Allen, also Certified Pool Operator. Thank you, Christie. Tyler Kemp has a Peace Officer Certification. Todd Sirmarini is a Peace Officer Certification. Justin Pugh has the Basic Peace Officer Certification. Michael Roell has a Basic Peace Officer Certification. And we also have Seth Ritchie, AKA prettiest police officer on the earth. I don't know who wrote that in there. He has also received the Basic Peace Officer Certification. I don't know where that, I don't know who wrote that on there.
That was for Mitch.
Zach Anderson, he received the Advanced Peace Officer Certification. And we have Justin McQuire, the Master Peace Officer Certification. He's not here, okay. And our own Bethany Warner with a Certified Public Communicator. Folks, like I said, these guys have went beyond, you know, not really beyond of God's duty, but this is part of their job to go out and get this certification, and there's many more in the city. These are the ones for 2018, and we want to thank them for what they do and thank them for doing this. So, Council, if you could stand up and give them applause so we can get in the picture. Once again, thank you very much, folks.
Did we miss anybody? Somebody here that was not on our list?
At this time of our meeting, we normally have the citizens' participation, and at this time, I don't believe we have any. Do we have any, Carla? Okay. But if there's somebody that wants to participate, the mic's on. If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda tonight. Items on the consent agenda. Number one is to consider approving City Council Meeting Minutes of February 19th, 2019, Regular Meeting, and February 25th, 2019, Workshop. Number two is to consider adopting Resolution Number 1910, amending the Articles of the Incorporation for Granbury Historical Properties Corporation, and appointing qualified staff members to the Board of Directors. As you read through that, Council, you've seen where it really didn't match our charter. We had some folks that were on there that was not allowed by the charter, so we kind of cleaned that up and assigned the different staff members to accommodate that. Number three was to consider allowing Jerry Durant to assign a Commercial Center Development Credits for other projects located within the Commerce Center. This is an item that we talked about in the past, and he is wanting to make sure that it's okay to do that. Other one, number four, was to receive the 2018 Racial Profiling Report, which has been sent to my office and has been reviewed by the staff. Number five is to consider adopting Ordinance Number 1912, amending the operating budget for the General Utility and Tourism Fund for the fiscal year 2018-2019. You have, there's been some, it's kind of some housekeeping there. We've received some donations. We want to clean up some of those line items, and there's some new computers that is a tune of about 53,000, somewhere there and about, and then there's about 32,000 for the study for the fire sprinkler system for the downtown area, where we're going to move some money around for that. And also, the Visit Granbury has some money there for the rental and stuff, but all these have been identified into budget in there, but we do have Ava Gregory here to speak on that if needed. And number six was to consider approving the purchase of 30 workstations for the total estimated cost of 52,500 utilizing SHI Government Solutions. And these are, we're going to replace the oldest first for the replacement there. So, Council, you've had an opportunity to look at this consent agenda items and review those. Are there any of those items that you wish to change, modify, or to pull off the consent agenda and move on to the deliberation agenda at this time? Said none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
(inaudible).
I think I got a motion by Councilman Corrigan and a second by Councilman Mobley. You know, there's a lot of people in Austin that call him Mobley, and you know, I don't feel bad about it at all.
There's a lot of people at this diocese that call me that.
Is that right? Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion, Council? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Consent agenda is approved. Next, we're going to move into the deliberation agenda. First item we have on there is a presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Fiscal Report, basically an audit of the city of Granbury for the fiscal year 2017-2018. Mr. Chris Coffin, do you have a staff report on that?
Yes, sir. I would like to introduce Ava Gregory, our Finance Director. She has a few slides, and then after that, we have Daniel Hungerford, which is one of the newest partners at George Morgan and Sneed Accounting Firm that did our audit. So, we'll let them tell us all about it.
Thank you, Chris.
Good evening.
They're working on getting the slideshow up. Here we go.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, City Manager, City Attorney. I wanted to take this opportunity to give you a little high-level overview of our financial presentation. Daniel Hungerford with George Morgan and Sneed is here. He's one of the managing partners. He's our CPA, and he will be able to give you even more detail. The book has been presented to you electronically and also in a paper format today. I wanted to tell you that we completed our audit, and this is your comprehensive annual audit report for fiscal year 2017, ending September 30th, 2018. The report is published as per our charter and also required by the law, and it provides information to bondholders, citizens, City Council, or any other interested parties who wants to know of the financial condition of the city. And it's presented in three sections, and the first section is the introductory section, the financial section, and the statistical section. I wanted to give you an update on the financial side for you to be able to kind of, the book is very much in detail. And just to review, one of our largest revenues for the general fund is the ad valorem or property tax revenue. On this chart, you are able to see the last six years of the growth. On one side of the axis, we are showing the property valuations in millions. In fiscal year 2017-18, we reached a $1.4 billion valuation. The blue chart on the very top just is a trend line showing the general direction of the growth, which is being upwards. The growth for the last six years averaged about 5%. And on the right side of the axis, we are showing you the tax rate, which has been under 40 cents since 2012. It's been varying between 39 cents, 39.4, 39.99 cents for the last six years. As you can see, this is a very strong growth that we have been experiencing, and if you remember, just for the current year that we are not talking about, we almost reached a $1.5 billion valuation. That was another 9% that we grew last year. With that, the next revenue trend I want to talk to you about is our sales tax collection. Again, I'm showing you the last six years. The growth last year reached 9%. We have finished the year at $8.6 million. We almost added another, the increase represents about $700,000 compared to the previous year. Again, very strong growth. It relates to the commercial growth that we have been experiencing, strong taxpayers in the local economy, and also the growth in population that translates to this growth. The third revenue stream I wanted to show you is the hotel occupancy tax. Again, we have seen growth for the last five years. Last year, it was stable. We've seen a slight decrease of 1%, and that was mainly due to the outage. The previous year, we had two outages, and last year, we only had one. With that, another important slide is that you will see reference in the CAFER book, which we track very closely, is our fund balance. This is the fund balance, both in dollar value and percentage value for the general fund and the utility fund. The general fund is represented with a red line. The utility fund is represented with a green line. Over time, a strong fund balance is a good indicator of the financial position of the city. And citywide, our city maintains at least pledges to maintain reserve balance of 90 days or 25% of the net budgeted operating expense. So, the top table on the left side, you see the fund balance in dollar values. As you can see, the general fund reached on a signed fund balance of $7.6 million. I'm looking at that table under 2018. That is a growth of $1.4 million from the previous year. So, as I mentioned to you that we pledged to maintain 25%, we are actually at 56% as of September 30th, 2018. On the utility fund side, we are very close to about the same level, $7.7 million. That's an increase of $2.9 million. We are at 58% of the fund balance percentage. This is a very strong growth. On the general fund side, it's attributable again to sales tax. We've seen the $670,000 growth in sales tax. We also saw an increase in property valuation revenue, $170,000. Building permits have increased as well. And overall, we've seen a lot of savings in our departments that contributed to the added fund balance. On the utility fund side, we have seen a large growth in water revenue that went up about $800,000 compared to the previous year. This is a combination of added new customers, about 300 new connections that were added, as well as we were expecting the growth due to our new meter infrastructure that was replaced. All the city's meters were replaced, so because we are able to capture all the consumption that contributes to the increase as well. On the sewer side, we have seen an increase of about 8%, which translates to $200,000. But the largest savings that contributed to the fund balance for the utility fund is the savings that we have been able to maintain due to the electric power purchase cost. That was about $2.5 million savings compared to the previous year. Now that I showed you the fund balance, I also wanted to show you our debt, where we are currently. As you can see, citywide, in 2018, we are at $76 million, which has not changed largely compared to 2017, because in 2018, we really didn't issue any new debt. In fiscal year 2018, we didn't issue new debt. We refunded two of our revenue bonds, the 1999 and the 2010 revenue bond, which saved the city in the long run about $300,000. But I wanted to draw your attention to 2014, where we were back in 2014, low under $41 million compared to where we are now. And that is due to, we had issued large infrastructure utility fund debt, as you remember, for the water treatment plant, for the water distribution lines, for the meter project. So, we were investing in our community as we are growing. And in 2019, fiscal year 2019, just recently, we closed on two issues in December. That is another $48 million. So, our projected debt for 2019 will be at $121 million. That is the reason it's very important that we are able to grow our fund balance, maintain that growth. So, while we are investing our infrastructure, we are also able to save and build up our fund balance. So, that will reflect really well at our next bond rating as well.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yeah.
Are you saying, year 2014, the city was in debt $40 million?
Yes.
And now, we're in debt $121 million?
As of fiscal year 2018, we were $76 million, and yes, and in December, we added another $48 million to, so I'm projecting that will be at $121, yes.
So, we're $80 million more today than we were four years ago.
Yes. And that is, I can recap that, $16 million for the water treatment plant, $15 million for the water distribution lines, $10 million for the airport, $3 million for the meter project.
You said 16, 16, and what?
10.
Huh?
10 for the airport.
10 for the airport.
16 for the water treatment plant, 15 for the water distribution line, 2.7 for the meter project.
2.7?
Mm-hmm. $14 million for the second phase of the water treatment plant, and $34 million for the wastewater treatment plant.
Do you have it broken down in the book?
Excuse me?
Is that broken down in the book y'all gave us tonight?
About the new debt.
The new debt is mentioned, yes. The new debt is mentioned in the book, because it has to be reflecting what happened since the audit. But yes, the book has all the debts broken down, and the new debt is mentioned as well. But like I said, it's good news, because we are growing. We are able to meet the needs of our citizens and the growth of the city while we are saving money and adding to the fund balance. So, both of those factors are very important, because once you are rated with the bond rating agencies, they understand that you have to be funding infrastructure growth. So, investing in infrastructure is important in order to maintain your growth, but in the same time, you have to be able to build up your fund balance. So, at this time, I will let our auditor, Daniel Hungerford, to go over a little bit more details about their audit and the comprehensive annual statement. If you have any other questions, I'll be here. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Daniel Hungerford. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going over the numbers. I think Ava just did a pretty good job giving you some details about your financial position. I wanted to just go over kind of our audit reports. Our independent auditor's report is on page one. It's unqualified or unmodified opinion. It states that, in our opinion, your financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The only change that we have to this opinion letter this year is on page two, there's, we bring to your attention, there was a change in accounting principle. During the year, the city implemented a new GASB statement, GASB 75, regarding post-employment benefits. We added some new no disclosures on pages 14 and 20. The biggest change, though, is that we had to add a liability to your books. It's about $460,000 for what TMRS thinks your projected benefits for their supplemental death benefit fund for your employees are. It's something new that we've added this year because of that change in accounting Towards the end of the book, on page 125, is our independent auditor's report on internal control and compliance based on government auditing standards. We did not identify any deficiencies in internal control or instances of non-compliance that we were required to report. We also didn't have any management comments or any internal control issues that we reported in a separate letter this year. The last thing I was going to just bring to your attention is we did have a single audit this year. The Texas Water Development Board loans, they're funded with drinking water state revolving funds, which are federal pass-through funds, so we have to audit compliance with those funds. And during the year, in our opinion, the city complied with those requirements, and we didn't have any internal control or compliance issues or any question costs related to that program. I think that the audit went smooth. Ava and her staff had everything prepared. We didn't have any issues or any hang-ups completing the audit, and overall, it was a good audit. Do you have any questions for me?
Only question I got is, it's going from $40 million in debt to $121 million. That don't bother you?
Well, as auditor, I mean, the decision to issue the debt isn't ours. We audit and report what you've done in the CAFER and make sure that everything that's in the financial statements in the audit is correct. If you issued $40 million in debt and didn't report it here and tried to hide it, then we would have an issue and have something we reported. But everything that's here is very transparent and shows that each year, when you issue that debt, it shows it here. It is there for everyone to see.
And this is a certified audit?
Yes, sir. It's a standard audit you would get from anyone, any other audit firm.
I might just add, for Councilmember Allen's comfort, that, you know, that debt was issued over a period of time at extremely low interest rates, so some of them are below 1% interest rates. So, y'all did a good job securing financing for all these projects that we needed to do as a council.
So, these numbers, they, on page 109 and 110, so they correspond with the year, so you can go all the way up there to 2009, right?
Yes, sir.
And look at the total debt, which was more than 2014. Am I reading that right?
Yes, sir.
Right.
Yes, on page 110, the...
109, 110, yeah, right.
Yes, sir.
So, that breaks down to the percentage and the total debt per capita and all that, okay.
Yes, sir. And as I said, a lot of the debt that's been issued lately has been funded with Texas Water Development Board.
I got you.
And with the low interest rate, and has been used for the water treatment plant and the water infrastructure. water infrastructure.
Very good. Looks like it's a lot of good reading here for the council.
Yes, sir.
Council, you have any questions or comments for Ava or Daniel there, or the city manager? This is a presentation, so thank you for the presentation. We'll make sure we look through the book here, and if we got any questions, I'm sure they'll be addressing them to Ava, whoever, so...
Yes, sir. If you have any questions, let Ava know, and we'll be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim, did I miss you, or you... Did you sneak in on me here?
I guess I was a couple minutes...
I was looking for... Well, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry.
Well, I looked down there, I thought, what, did I miss something here?
No, it's me. I understand. I had just...
Well, you're welcome back, okay? Okay. Thank you. Our next item is a public hearing, and consider the following request from CRB asset management. And I'm going to read into it here. Scott, do you have any history on this one?
Mayor, as a part of this application and the FIA with the final plat, we received a continuance request by the applicant to continue working on some of the application proposals to support the FIA in the plat application before council acts on it. So regarding the request, staff recommends accepting the request to continue the final plat application, and the FIA is presented by the applicant.
Thank you, Scott. So council, the staff has accepted that. So as you see in front of you, I think everybody has that with the CJB, they have a request for the continuance on the final plat, and also, they want to note additionally, they hereby waive their 30-day requirement as identified with the Texas municipal code, which indicates that the city must take action on the plat within 30 days. So council, with that said, I'll entertain a motion to accept the request with the waiver also.
So move.
So I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Wadley. Council, any more discussion on this item? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Look forward to hearing from them. Our next item is a public hearing, and consider adopting ordinance number 1913. And once again, I'm going to call upon Scott Sobchak to give us a staff report on that, if you would, please, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. What we have is an application to take a piece of property that's currently a zone single-family residential R8.4. You can see the property bounded in red on your overscreen. It's that... It fronts off Crockett Street, it backs up against the creek. This is just to the north of our central business district, north of Bridge Street. Again, it's currently a zone single-family residential. Our records have shown that it's been operated as commercial since our records go back. For whatever reason, this was a zone single-family residential as a part of the whole cell rezoning of the entire city in 2001, although it's been operating as non-conforming commercial ever since. Not too far back, we had this particular building go vacant. There's a picture of the site. It went vacant, and as a part of our zoning ordinance, if it goes vacant for a period of greater than six months, then it loses its non-conforming status. So it's circling back around. The property owner wishes to include this area into the central business district, which is commensurate with those areas that are to the west and to the south. That's the area delineated in blue on your screen. That's our central business district. It just includes this property into the CBD, which would allow for those retail office uses that the applicant seeks to acquire certificates of occupancy for. The only uniqueness to this, the CBD doesn't require any kind of parking requirement. It all kind of incorporates the parking to the central business district as a whole, although this particular piece of property does have onsite parking, which, to my knowledge, the applicant doesn't want to change. We did, as a part of this proposal, send notices out to adjoining property owners within 200 feet, and also published in the Hood County News. We have received one notice in opposition. That opposition is noticed with a star on the screen. It's actually outside the 200-foot halo, so there's no percentage apportionment. The notices that we send are more conservative. We send about 220 foot outside the notification halo, and they just account for those that are within the 200 foot by statutory requirement. So one letter in opposition, it doesn't change the percentages. Your planning and zoning commission deliberated on the matter and unanimously approved rezoning the properties from single-family residential R8.4 to central business district as recommended by the applicant. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I will open up the public hearing to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? If hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or concerns to Scott or the staff on this particular If hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the rezoning request for the single-family residential R8.4 to the central business district CBD as requested.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Reiner. Council, any more discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you, Scott. The next item is number 10, is a public hearing, and consider approving the request of Pam Nefert to final plat a 7.339 acre tract of the Martin-Sizer survey abstract number 502, as lots 1 through 3, block 1 of the Stella's Place addition. This property is located on Davis Road, north of Oakton Highway. Once again, I'd like to call upon Scott Sobchak to give us a staff report, if you would, please.
Mayor, council, Mr. Manager, this particular preliminary plat application was approved by P&amp;Z and City Council in January 2019. It proposes off of Davis Road, three residential lots. This is the piece of property that the council previously approved too well on the site. We also discussed, as a part of the preliminary plat, the fact that there's a utility district to the east that's supporting one existing structure that will be incorporated in that lot as well. The final plat application is commensurate with what council approved on the preliminary plat. There's been no subsequent changes. There's a modest dedication for the expansion of Davis Road in compliance with the roadway width requirements. There are no variances tied to this particular application as presented. Your planning and zoning commission unanimously recommend approval as presented by the applicant.
Pretty straightforward, isn't it?
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. I'll open up the public hearing at this time. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions on this particular property or on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said final plat.
So move.
I have a motion from Councilman Mobley, and a second by Councilman Wadley. Council, any more discussion on this item? Got something?
He doesn't.
He don't. If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is a threefold here. We're going to discuss items number 11, 12, and 13. 11 being a public hearing considering adopting ordinance number 1914, and number 12, a public hearing considering adopting ordinance number 1915, and number 13, a public hearing considering approving the request of the Cheval Land Company to vacate a final plat. And I'm going to call upon Scott once again to give us history on all three of these, if you would, Scott, so we can combine them.
Absolutely, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, council, and Mr. Manager. What we have is three applications working together, but they are independent applications. To go back to a little of the history, this is the application off Moore Street, where there was a proposed reception wedding venue off of Moore Street. And then, if you notice, in the center of the picture there, we had three lots. The pink lot was for the site of the wedding venue, and it had a site plan element tied with the zoning adoption ordinance as well, showing the plot plan with the elevations for the wedding chapel and the secondary building there. The developer wishes to no longer go forward with this particular application. Not too long ago, we received a letter from the developer applicant saying that he wanted his surety returned, the surety being those monies to support the expansion of the water and sewer to support these three lots. So we had the discussion with them to say, these are three approved lots, and we can't return the money. We either need to continue with the thought that these are three approved lots that are going to be sustained with water and sewer, or there's a process that we have where we can vacate it, but you have to vacate and roll back the zoning back to interim holding in order to do that before we return the surety. So that's the route the developer chose in order to get his surety back. In order to do that, we need to vacate and file that vacating plat at the clerk's office and return it back to survey. So the first request is a request regarding the comprehensive land use plan, to take it from retail and office back to low-density residential, which is where he was on the comp plan before this process got going. The second zoning is a zoning application to rezone that light commercial zone district that you see in pink, bounded by teal, back into interim holding, again, that green shade, which is where we started from prior to beginning this. And then the third application is that vacating plat in order to take those three lots out of recorded lots and back into survey. And so the next developer speculator that would come in would have to go through this process of divvying it up based on his or her interests on how they want to develop the property and then get appropriately zoned. Again, this is the change to the comprehensive plan. That red area will go back to a kind of a light beige color, which is low-density residential. And this is a copy of the plat. Statutorily, we have to submit a document to the county clerk's office with a big stamp that says vacated, with the minutes of these council meetings that it was formally acted So your planning and zoning commission on the first two applications, recommended by a vote of five to nothing to approve the application as presented, that being the future land use map change and the rezoning request to interim holding. On the vacating plat, while we were going through the vacating plat process, as a part of our requirements, we always submit out to the franchise agencies to make sure that they don't have any infrastructure in the easements to be abandoned. Well, lo and behold, we got two responses to that. One from Tri-County and one from AT&amp;T, saying that they, one, AT&amp;T has infrastructure there, and secondly, Tri-County doesn't want to abandon that portion of the easement along Moore Street. So this slide shows that portion of Moore Street that's running east-west generally in that 15-foot easement that both franchise agencies want to keep intact. So you see, to the left is the letter from Tri-County saying, again, more specifically on the bottom, that they are fine with abandoning everything, with the exception of the Moore Street easement. And then we have an email from AT&amp;T saying that they have infrastructure there, and they wish to keep that particular easement intact as well. So there's a way to do this. So your planning and zoning commission recommended conditional denial of the vacating plat with the condition being that a separate easement or a separate instrument dedicating the easement along Moore Street be filed and recorded at the county clerk's office before we file the vacating plat at the county clerk's office. So there will be a separate easement filed and recorded, and then, once that condition has been met, then we can process the vacating plat and then file that for the county clerk. And then this will be transferred back to survey. So to wrap it up, Mayor, council, we have three cases by a vote of five a's and zero nays. The P&amp;Z recommended approval of amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map to go from retail office to low-density residential. A vote of five a's and zero nays to rezone the property from light commercial to interim holding. And at the very bottom, case number PL 201910, by a vote of five a's and zero nays, conditional denial of the vacating plat with the condition being that the vacating plat shall remain denied until such time the referenced easement along Moore Street has been properly dedicated and filed at the Hood County deed records. That condition being met, then we can finalize processing this vacating plat. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. I think the city manager wants to clarify something. Go ahead.
So the surety matures April 12th?
That's correct.
And so this easement would need to be executed prior to that?
That's correct.
Okay. Just so that's shown in the record.
Right. And if you notice, and I'm glad you're bringing that up, if you notice that the very last portion of the statement in the P&amp;Z motion, they typically put a six-month timeframe in the last statement from P&amp;Z, is conditional denial is good for a period of six months from the city council action. So we may want to alter that six months to April 12th. Is that correct?
That's what I was told.
Yeah. Prior to the expiration of the...
So the council could actually make the motion to set the timeline at April 12th instead of the six months that the staff had recommended, right?
Yes, sir.
Because it's...
So he's...
What is April 12th? Is it...
That's the date of the letter predating expires.
Let's see what day that falls on.
Yeah. Probably would have... Yeah. So that's something we want to consider, council, is that...
April 10th is on a Sunday, so...
So back it up.
April 8th. Oh, wait, I'm on the wrong one. The 10th is Wednesday. So that'd be fine. April 10th is a Wednesday.
So they approved everything, except they give them a six month.
They give them a six month, which is going to expire in April, so we can start drawing down right then.
We're required to do something with that collateral by the 12th of April.
Right. And we can.
They've got to move on it, yeah.
They need to get the easement drawn up.
And the planning and zoning commission wasn't made aware of the expiration date on the collateral to support this development?
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open up to the public right now on all three of those items, item number 11, 12, and 13. So if there's anybody in the public that wished to speak on those, and I think the owner's in the audience, right? Mark's in the audience here, so if there's a question, sir... Do you have a statement? Do you want to talk about it anymore?
Will say.
So nobody in the audience, so... If none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or concerns on this particular item or on these particular items? Like Scott said, we will be voting on all three of these items. The first one being to amend the future land use, and as you see, you have two options there, to amend or deny. The council, the staff has recommended the amendment. Council, you got any questions on that? If none, I'll entertain a motion to amend the future land use contained within the 2016 comprehensive plan to allow for the low-density residential designation instead of the retail office designation on the 6.7, 4-point acres of land, and direct the city manager and staff to change the area on the future land use plan contained within the 2016 comprehensive plan from retail office to low-density residential on the subject property.
So move.
It's a pretty long motion there. We got a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on that item? None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next item is item number 12, which will be considering adopting ordinance number 1715, approving the request of the Cheval... Cheval, is that Cheval or Cheval?
No.
Land Company to rezone Lot 2, Block 1 of that Chateau addition. So council, do we have any concerns or questions on that? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the adopting ordinance number 1915.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilman Wadley.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Reiner. Council, any more discussion on that item? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That, too, is approved. Our next item is the public hearing, considering approving the request to vacate the final plat. And as you've seen there, there's some recommendations there by the staff. Council, do you have any more... Do you have any discussion on that item? If none, I will entertain a motion to conditional deny of the vacant plat with the condition being of the vacating plat shall remain denied until such time the referenced easement along Moore Street has been properly dedicated and filed at the Hood County deed report, then the condition shall have been met by the vacancy plat may be filed and recorded. That conditional denial is good for a period of no later than April 10th from the city council action on the plat.
So move.
So we have that motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Reiner. Does that cover all bases?
Yes, sir.
Shall we have a motion and a second? Any more discussion on that, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That, too, is approved. Mark, thanks for being here today.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate you.
Our next item is a public hearing, and consider adopting the following ordinances, approving the request of the city of Granbury to amend provisions related to the... the request of the City of Granbury to amend provisions related to the sidewalk construction policy. We got two ordinances here, ordinance number 1916 and ordinance number 1917. I'm going to call upon Scott once again to give the counsel a briefing on that, if you would, please, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel, and Mr. Manager. What we have is a request that came from Counsel through the City Manager's office down to the planning staff to look at the language that we have in our ordinances regarding sidewalks and possibly take some of the volume of the sidewalk variances off the table procedurally away from P&amp;Z and City Council. So we've done that. We have two bodies of ordinances that contain language regarding the regulation of sidewalks. The first is subdivision ordinance, the second of which is the Granbury Code ordinances. And what we did was looked at the two simultaneously and made sure that the language that we're changing speaks to one another regarding processes. So in synthesizing those, what we did was come up with some tenets of what we wanted to do, first of which is expand upon the developer's building responsibilities, provide for DRC latitude for administrative authority in approving these things. That way, you don't see the volume. And identifying appeals process just in case we have an aggrieved party, but that's clearly enumerated. So, long story short, and I'm not going to read all these, save everybody the time and effort here, but what we've done in order to synthesize this is to come up with a process that says, once you go through DRC, the DRC in itself has the latitude to say, first and foremost is the mission statement, sidewalks are a priority for the City of Granbury. We want sidewalks. We know there may be some safety or topographical conditions, but that authority to kind of find some common ground, DRC should have the latitude. So, for example, the situation like YMCA where it was behind the curb, but it still met the spirit in intent in getting it from point A to point B to adjoining properties, no, there has to go to P&amp;Z and City Council staff can do that, or DRC can do that. Serpentine sidewalks, if we don't need it at the back of curb and they kind of want to interweave a sidewalk through the landscaping and use a little more street frontage to do that, then that's fine, too. Again, trying to give DRC the latitude to meet the spirit and intent of providing sidewalks. Placing notes on plats. If there's a construction issue of which we're aware of, like a future roadway project, and it may rip the sidewalk out, and we can put a note on the plat, again, the DRC can have that requirement placed on the plat, and again, we're taking it off the table from P&amp;Z and City Council. If there's a safety reason and DRC really wants it, then obviously the goal is to have them install it and hopefully find some common ground with the developer. The final appeal is with Chris, the city manager, so if they're agreed by a decision the DRC makes, then it goes to Chris for final disposition. And just like any appeals process, there's a timeframe from which the appeal may be filed. And so we think this is the first step in possibly getting these tended to at staff level. And be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Here again, this is a public hearing, so if anybody in the public wishes to comment on our changes to our sidewalk ordinance? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions for Scott or Chris or the staff here on the changes, the said changes? Well, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion then to approve the amendments to the subdivision ordinances as presented by the staff.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Wadley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Allen. You all right, Mr. Allen? Okay.
Need something, right?
Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those are approved. Thank you. Our next item is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance number 1918, approving the request of the City of Granbury to amend another ordinance, 01819. The City of Granbury zoning ordinance, Article 12, Section 12.3C, signs definitions to amend the definition of monument signs, multi-tenant monument signs, and commercial monument signs. Once again, I'm going to call upon Scott, right, Scott, to give the council a report on that, if you would, please, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel, and Mr. Manager. This is just some housekeeping work that we looked at our ordinances regarding some language that we have regarding clarification of what a monument sign is and is not. I know we've had a sign contractor kind of really scrutinize our definition, and I think our language was holding fast, especially since if you Google a monument sign and then hit the image button, it shows monument signs going all the way through the advertising area to grade, but there's nothing wrong with a few graphics to help spell things out for people. I know they say pictures worth a thousand words, so what we try to do is capture a few pictures and say, what monument sign is this and not this. So in essence, that's what's getting rolled into the zoning ordinance, is what a monument sign is, this, which is your top picture, that it goes the width of the advertising area all the way down through to grade with stone, brick, or postone, and it's not a pole wrapped in stone. And further, we actually rolled over to the definitions portion of the zoning ordinance, which is Article 12, and stated quite clearly that the mace must be solid at a minimum the width of the sign cabinet or advertising area all the way down to grade. So again, we're just trying to clarify the language rather than having to kind of get into protracted arguments with an occasional sign contractor. Your planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval by a vote of five ayes and zero nays?
Thank you, Scott. I've got a question for our city manager, I guess, or Scott. Is there ever the, is there ever where the state would override that or that they would have a, say, a different code that said a sign could be on a pole and this and that and that it would override our ordinances?
The state could pass a bill anytime they're in session to do anything they want.
And they're in session?
That would supersede our ordinances.
Okay. But, I mean, I've seen where they have had some items out there, so that, I mean, right now, we've got signs of all types. And as we change ours, we see that we'd like for them all to be this way, but then we change them again, we don't quite get to the point where we have all of them this way, and you've got some that were 10 years ago, were okay, and then you've got some that were 30 years ago, okay. And so what point, you know, I mean, they're all still grandfathered in there, you might say, and then we may change this one again.
So the non-conforming status is allowed, or what we call grandfathered, for those signs that are older than our ordinance?
Right.
So we can't retroactively cause people to change their signs to meet our standards? So you adopted a sign ordinance in 2001 or something like that, and this is it, right?
Correct. So...
But we're changing it today.
Well, no, we're not changing it. We're making it more clear.
Clear, okay.
To where they can't be misconstrued and have to do this and then come back and have to do that.
Okay.
It's really a communication piece to one particular sign contractor that doesn't agree like the other sign contractor do and want to do something different. So we're clarifying it where it matches the original intent back in 2001. So there are some signs that are non-conforming, and like when the damage is done to them from a storm event or dilapidated, if it takes more than 60% repair to do that, then it has to come into performance with this new ordinance.
That was my next question.
From 2001, the new ordinance.
So it's not just about somebody changing ownership, it's when that particular sign is, like you said, damaged or...
Or out of code compliance. Right.
Very good.
Is this the only sign we're changing?
All of our signs are supposed to be monument signs moving forward, and there are perimeters that allow them to be different heights. And the sign size inside that monument can only exceed a certain percentage of the face of that, so it's just not all a sign. It's got to have some masonry. A good example of our sign ordinance is Tankersley Automotive or Transmission down on Pearl Street. He did a new sign, and you can see how it looks, and that perfectly matches our ordinance.
That was good, yeah.
And no variances, no discussion about...
Are they going to, was this correct, the one for the chicken place?
It's already gone.
It's already been changed.
So you can call this the chicken ordinance.
And it will be like that? Okay. I agree with you.
Hey, it was a sad, but I had to.
But you touched on a good point, that all these signs would have been applied to the 2001 ordinance. So from 2001 onward, we should be permitting these type signs, which says this.
Going forward, right. Where sooner or later, you're going to see the bulk of them that are going to be the monument signs that we identified here.
Yeah, you look at our new development.
Well, yeah, yeah.
The Kroger development has a grandfathered sign, but they're bringing it up to our standards, is what I recall.
And took one down.
Yeah.
As a part of amortizing and getting more tenants on the one compliant side.
Yeah.
Very good. This is a public hearing, so I'll open up the public, to the public. Anybody in the public wish to discuss our signed ordinance? If hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any more questions or concerns on the said ordinance changes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amendments to the zoning ordinance as presented by the City Council.
So moved.
By the staff, I'm sorry.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Corgan.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion on this ordinance, Steve? Said none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That, too, is approved. Our next item is item number 16, is to consider awarding a 2019 street improvements project number 17-6523-12 to the J Mills Contracting LLC out of Stevensville, Texas, for their lowest bid amount of, is that 1 million? 1,086,111,25 for the base bid and the 81,850 for the alternative bid. And I'm going to call upon Chris Coffin to give us a report on that, if you would, please, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to encourage us to go into executive session to discuss this before we take any action on it and allow for conversation related to previous litigation and possible litigation in the future before we consider this bid.
So, Mr. Coffin feels there's some attorney issues that we need to discuss back in executive session, and as before he really speaks on a lot of this, would consider going back there to talk on that. Counsel, you got any comments on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I was hoping I'd speak all a lot today, but...
I'm hoping you wouldn't.
I get that a lot. So we've seen the past litigation, but there's future litigation?
No, there possibly could be. We need to discuss.
We can say that about anybody we deal with.
Depends on how you vote and what happens out in this open session. What's said can come out, doesn't need to be said in open session. It could, so I just want to caution you, if you want to accept the bid...
So you're trying to protect, you're trying to protect the J Mills?
Trying to protect the J Mills and the city.
And the city, okay.
I want to be careful.
Any other comments on this, Counsel?
I'll agree with the city manager.
So do I have a, do I have a motion to do so?
I'm so moved.
So I've got a motion by Councilman Allen to, at this time, go into executive session to discuss this particular item.
Second.
And we have a second by Councilperson Wadley. No more discussion, Counsel? Councilman Corgan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Wadley?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Nay.
Councilman Reiner?
Nay.
And it's up to me, I'll say aye. One, two, three, four. We will break for executive session to discuss this item. The council has reconvened into open session. There was no action taken in an executive session. The council will now resume the deliberation agenda on item number 16, which was to consider awarding the 2019 street improvement project number 176523-12 to the J Mills Contracting LLC out of Stevensville, Texas, for their low bid amount of 1,086,111,25 for the base bid and the 81,850 for the alternative bid. So Chris, do you have a staff person who wants to give any more information on this, or are you going to do it yourself?
Well, I would just say that we've discussed with different caveats, this is the single bid, and staff recommends that we award the bid.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any discussion or any comments to make on this bid?
Well, we're going to be looking forward to them to give us a bid for the airport.
Look forward to working with them, yeah. We've had several projects with J Mills. J Mills has worked all over the place, and they've got the low bid here, so we look forward to working with them also. Counsel, any more discussion? If no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to award the said bid to J Mills.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corgan.
Second.
And a second, by Councilperson Reiner. Counsel, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That bid is awarded to J Mills. It's approved. Thank you. At this one, at this time, once again, I will now declare that the Granbury City Council has convened in the open session, and all the members are present in the City Council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Government Code and quarters with the authority contained in this following sections, consultation with the attorney, 551071, 551072, deliberation regarding real property, 551074, personnel matters, the city manager's annual review, and 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiation. We're now going to executive session. Now reconvened in open session, there was no action taken in executive session. Counsel, is there any more discussion? If no more discussion, the council meeting is now adjourned.